I'd like to call the order to Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education Regular Meeting at April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six thirty held in the Mount Pleasant High School Cafeteria. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in the public, but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed in a previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. As a courtesy, please turn off or silence yourself while we continue our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Statement. Mount Pleasant Public School is honored to acknowledge the Indigenous people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Indigenous people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation and a way of honoring the Indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since the time of Oreo and this land on which the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe have resided and has continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Next is roll call.
Sheila Murphy.
Here.
Jessica Derby.
Here.
Susan Pang.
Here.
Any comments?
Yes, sir.
Amy Timmottaker here and Amy Bond.
Yes, here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add or change?
I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but under the circumstances, are you going to be discussing the transportation issue? Or tonight, or?
I can give a very general update, but I don't have any more to report than what I reported to you all this morning.
Is it appropriate that we have some kind of discussion as to, I mean, it seems to be getting to be a pretty serious issue?
Okay.
Could we just kind of?
Sure.
Put that on? I mean, nothing final, just kind of bring it up so people know what's going on?
Next is the Student Board of Education Representative Report. Next is the Superintendent Report.
Good evening. The first item under my report is a bond project recommendation. I'll introduce you once again, Jeff Bates from the Wolgas Corporation. In your boardback at this evening, you have a recommendation for a bond project regarding electronic signs, and I will let Jeff provide the details on that. So thank you for being here once again, Jeff.
Not a problem. Glad to join you again. It was lovely. It's pretty good. Well, we had another bid just earlier last week. It turned out fairly well. We had, this was just for the signs, we had four bidders on this one. And the terms came in fairly good. We were all a little bit originally with Barrett Sign Company. We did our initial post interview with them. It was discovered that they didn't have a complete bid, the voluntary associated ad agency members that had to go with it, and they didn't have electrical costs involved with that. So we had one bid division. The scope was for the interior school, it wasn't by the park. So we went to the second bidder on three sign company, got a post interview with them, and they had a complete bid. We worked with them before, around the Grand Rapids area. We had folks who were district and the architect on board with the post interview too. And so we were pleased with the responses, and so we listed that on your board recommendations.
Do any board members have any questions for Jeff regarding this recommendation?
Just a thought, so the signs are going to look kind of like what the middle school were, yes?
That is correct.
So we're doing this a little bit differently this evening. We asked Jeff to present first so that he can get on with his evening, and then if there aren't any questions for him under new business, we'll revisit this topic and ask the board to make an approval at that point.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
And just while we're discussing, discussing bond projects, the other projects that we are continuing to work on that we hope to bring to you yet this spring are the parking lot and the ADA accessibility for the baseball softball complex, and then our technology projects. One is the replacement of all the security cameras and that system across the whole district. And then the other proposal will be to launch our one-to-one initiative with one-to-one device per student. So those are both projects that we're working on very diligently right now, and we believe we'll be able to bring them to you yet this spring. And next under my report is a presentation from the administrators at Mount Pleasant Middle School. So again, I'd like Eric Weaver to join us, and thank you for being here.
Hey, thanks for having me. We are going to continue on from our presentation last month. Last month, I shared with you behavior data that related to an MTSS process, and we are going to look at what that looks like based on the academic side of things. Just because last time I kind of taught you about the multi-tiered system of supports, and so now we're going to continue that on and look at it for academics. So first of all, thank you for having us here again tonight. And you have a parking lot in front of you again that we're going to use for users to jot down while I'm presenting on things you heard, questions you have about tonight's presentation, and then also on the bottom, more questions you have, but then also even thinking about what you'd like to see us present as we continue to present monthly to you from the middle school. So the first thing is back to the multi-tiered system of supports that I spoke about with the behavior, and that's the pyramids where we're looking at, or it could be a circle graph. It really can be any type of shape, but we're looking at eighty percent is where we want all of our students to be, and then we have the fifteen percent, which they're receiving some interventions or a little bit more support. And then we have five percent that also need even more in addition to that of support. All of our students receive the green, but then as we continue to progress, they also get the green, then they get the yellow, then if they're red, they get all three. So thinking about that when we move into our actual curriculum and academics, you're going to see that our goal for tier one is actually eighty percent, and you're not going to see us even near eighty percent. So our pyramid is actually kind of upside down when you actually look at it. But there's some reasons here, and you're actually going to see that we compare really close to our RASD and also our state averages. So when I say this, that's our goal, but it doesn't mean we're completely sideways from everyone else. So our curriculum that's being taught in all subject areas, that's our tier one instruction. All of our students receive that tier one instruction. Our special education classrooms receive that curriculum at a slower pace and with modifications as needed. We have in-class assessments that we get data from, our NWA tests and assessments that we do three times a year. So we do fall, winter, and spring. And we test language arts, math, and science in the middle school. Also, our state testing, MSEP and PSAT, which we're right in the heart of right now. Data, really, as we're thinking of coming off of our COVID years, we really feel like right now is just a baseline here, that we actually feel we're having to start looking. And you'll see that. So thinking about just the MSEP and the PSAT data, when we think of it from last spring. And last spring, we were still on COVID model, and we had Oilers Online students, and we only tested roughly five hundred and thirty-four students in language arts, five hundred and twenty-two students in math. And we have roughly seven twenty, this year we have seven hundred and seventy students, but last year was roughly seven hundred and twenty. So thinking about it overall, you can see there, there's the Mount Pleasant Middle School scores, state scores, and the RASD. So for language arts, we have to take sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, so we were forty-three percent. In sixth grade, we were actually above the average of the RASD, not to the state yet, but about two percent away from the state. Seventh grade, we were at thirty-nine, we were above the RASD and close to the state. And eighth grade, we were at sixty percent, which we were lower than the RASD and lower in the state for that too. And we have to remember that eighth grade is PSAT, so a little bit different and newer for some of our, you know, for our eighth graders, especially coming off some years of COVID. Math, twenty-eight percent, and you can see those scores as well. Sixth grade, we were above the RASD, not to the state yet. Seventh grade, we were above the RASD, again, not to the state average. Eighth grade, we were super close, point one to the RASD and not to the state. So, but as you can see, we're not way, way off from where we need to be. And that again, was last spring. So when we think about our actual assessments that we do three times a year, our NWA data, our students take it, and this, this is a little hard to see from here, but we had someone at the RASD take kind of the percentages, which is the grouping of where our students are, to kind of compare the groupings or the percentages to the students in the RASD at the winter testing that we just took. And if you see those percentages, the, um, just trying to, yeah, think of it. Is the, is the left, the, the left is the RASD. And so with the blue, the thirteen, thirteen percent are at the eighty-first to the ninety-ninth percentile, and ours, I think, is eighteen percent. So you can kind of look as they go down. We're not, we're not completely off, so it's eighteen, thirteen, twenty-two. You see how it kind of goes down. And so again, very close to our groupings in the percentile. So I think the point here is that these scores, of course, are probably not where we want them to be, for sure. But again, RASD-wise and state-wise, we're not a long ways off. So all of this stuff that we're doing for our students, interventions-wise or still at the tier one, our teachers all do an individual class kind of data dig based on each hour of their NWA, and they take a look at breaking down all of their students' data. Now, on the right-hand side is just an example of one of the teacher's hours where he kind of just took a look, what is the weakness and what am I going to work on with my students for the next few weeks until they test again? And so they do that individually by the hour, and they also kind of lay some little goals that they're going to work on based on hours. So first hour might be completely different than second hour, based on the needs. We also have an honor roll for our tier one, and those are percentages of the students who received honor roll in first try and second try. So then we get to the students who need a little more support. So we're getting to the tier two students and the tier three. And we offer a math foundations class, and we offer a language arts foundations class. And that is a class that actually takes place of one of their students' electives, and so they get about forty-three to forty-six minutes of that introduction every day. Thinking about that, we recommend to families that the students need those services, and we do have quite a few families who actually refuse that service. And so we identify them based on our data. They're, they can contact us and they fill out a form that says, like, we identified your child is needing this, and then we don't want those services. So it's one piece that kind of is there because we might have to service every student that needs that support. And these are general ed students, too. So zero hour, we also have interventions, and that includes, we use Imagine Math, which is a research-based program, and we also use IXL for language arts and math, and we use the diagnostics that kind of breaks down everybody's needs and gives them some real individualized instruction. All of our students who are eligible this year have, are receiving some sort of support, unless they have the research through the useful services. So that is huge because we've been able to add, Ms. Hegel and Mrs. Chapman, they are both doing the foundations class just as their whole day. And so we've been able to add some additional supports that way, and that's been huge for us because we have more support. And then it's the same teacher, so that's really consistent across the board, and our students are getting some good services that way. Every time we take our NWA, the students are, that some students exit the foundations program because they've gotten to where they need to be, and then we're able to bring more kids in. So we continue to have that entrance and exit criteria. And you can kind of see that criteria right there on the chart. If they're in a certain percentile, they receive an intervention. Some receive the foundations, and where they need to be to move out. The other thing, too, the NWA does a projected proficiency of if you're at a certain percentage, then that's projected to be proficient on the MSEP and the PSAT. So that's where we get our cutoff scores of when you get to a certain percentage, then you're able to move out because you're hopefully going to be proficient on the MSEP and the PSAT. So thinking about our brand-new year, starting fresh, kind of baseline, we're really into growth. So taking our students from where they are to where they need to be and continuing their growth throughout the year. So you can see on this chart, our students have already made huge growth from the fall, and they're going to continue to make even more as we move into the spring. And based on, you know, the students being in school, the students receiving, you know, first good instruction, those who need the foundations class, and those who need the interventions, with all that, we're showing some success. And you can see, you know, some are forty-seven percent growth, some's up to sixty-five percent growth. So our students are making huge growth as we continue. Where it says MPM is a big picture, that kind of shows, like, thinking about sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, the average projected growth should be about five, and right now we're at three point eight three. So we still have a ways to go into our spring testing, but we think with everything we put into place, we're really going to continue to show that growth in the next, you know, month or six weeks or something. And then overall, just a summary, students are making growth. I think that, I'm not sure we've ever had as big of a gap between our academic needs, and so that's where it's really important to look at the growth they're making versus, you know, are they actually all proficient? Our introductions are successful, and students are moving in and out. Our baseline is really starts this year, we're really starting over. Great start with our MTSS model. Ms. Chapman and Ms. Hegel are able to really spend some time setting up those processes of who enters the interventions, who enters the foundations, who exits them. Really able to see that in and out movement has been great, great for the kids. And then we're working toward our growth and progress, and overall, we're either at or just below the RASD and the state, and we feel like all of our work this year is hopefully going to pay off right now. PSAT, we just took it last week. We're in eighth grade MSEP now, and our sixth and seventh graders will take it in the next few weeks, then we'll end our year with NWA. So I just, I wanted to make sure we continue this MTSS conversation, and at the next presentation, we're going to do MTSS with our socially emotional strategies that we use in our building as well. So it'll be one more time where you're going to see that MTSS model. And the last part is filling out your parking lot, so I can pick that up, but make sure to add any more topics on the bottom that you'd like presented for you as well.
Thank you, Darby, for presenting the academics. That's pretty helpful. I was wondering if you felt, and I know we have a fair amount of standardized testing. Do you feel that it's all helpful in kind of drawing this picture? You've mentioned some and others, and so I just, you know, what we hear is there's a lot of testing, and it's great to see what you can do with it and kind of what you feel is of the value of these tests.
Well, some is, you know, not really a choice, right? So we have to take the PSAT and the MSEP. I mean, if I could take that type of testing away, I would love to, and really be able to just focus on our NWA. I do think that NWA scores are really valuable, and I think that the breakdowns in the data and the reports you can get from it is huge and right down to what the teachers need to be doing and working on on an individual basis. Some programs, too, like the IXL, they connect nicely. You know, if a student's here on NWA, they need to do this, so there's a lot of correlation in some of the programs as well.
That was essentially the question that I was writing down while we were asking it, so you don't have to respond to that question.
The other thing, too, thinking about the end of the year, it's a lot of testing for our students, too. But we have seen a lot more ownership with the NWA this year. Like I said, Ms. Chapman and Ms. Hegel are working so hard with those kids in foundations. They're really trying to be able to see the connections where if I do take this test seriously, I get to exit, right? And we're trying to make that correlation as well with the MSEP and the PSAT. They've done some nice little testing presentations to show the kids, like, take your time, you know, just the test-taking stuff that we, they really pushed out and done a nice job with.
Yeah, makes sense. Thank you.
With the different life layers of the MTSS system, do you notice different rates of growth between different groups?
Definitely. And I think that's just with any group of students, you're always going to see a different amount of growth. And also, once they already have a skill, like, if you think about the eighty percent, it's going, you know, they're just going to keep building upon that. If you think about maybe someone in the fifteen percent, they might be lacking some of those base skills. So it's, they're not going to make as much growth because they have to go back and pick up some of those other skills to move forward. And so still progressing, but maybe some skills, they might get a little bit more, but they've still got to pick up some that maybe they didn't have.
So is it fair to say that the kids in the larger bottom green, like, are eighty percent, their growth rate is still good for other, as compared to other eighth graders who grow?
And some of them, if you think about kids who are where they're already supposed to be on their grade level or their RIT, what it's called, their score, sometimes there's not a lot to grow. And so maybe it's, maybe some are at the top of the RIT, and then they only have, like, maybe two points, you know what I mean? So it doesn't really, doesn't show maybe as much because there's not as much to go, so based on that. So when they are at that level, it's harder to make as much growth.
Just, so I'm trying to flip the parents, every kid, parent lets their kid to grow. So if my kid's taking all the advanced classes, are they still growing, right? Because we focus a lot on the kids who are not at the bottom, so I was just trying to flip it to see.
Thank you. I wondered, so there's a lot of averages, and I wondered if you had looked at the standard deviations or like the noise of the averages, because I'm guessing it's very large, and whether we compare, like, the comparisons are really useful, both from the state point of view and our local regional area. And I've wondered several times if we don't have a larger standard deviation than some of these other groups. And again, it's not, next time, certainly, I realize that's a paramount order, but if we could see some of that noise and see if we buy more laws, kind of what I'm getting at, if we have to truly continue, or if we have two kind of core groups, one's struggling and one's more successful. And maybe we don't, maybe it is more fragile than I think it is.
And Ms. Hegel would have to say that she likes to look, and we all like to look, but she's a master at it, where we're looking at more than one data point. And so not just instantly this year, and so we do go back and try to correlate that where we can see, you know, maybe they're having two ears and maybe average that to kind of spell out where they need to be. So she does a great job of that and helps us see that it's not just that one data point and doesn't end up helping us use more of them in the standard deviation as well.
Does anyone else have questions? Board Derby. Thank you for being here and we'll ensure that, where are you going to collect your parking lots from?
Yeah, I'll get them if they're not filled out right now.
Okay. Thank you. The next item under my report is an update from the Professional Study Committee with Katie Royal. Katie, thank you for being here again.
Hi, thank you for having me again. Tonight's presentation is going to be a little bit shorter. What we wanted to do at the beginning is, just as a general reminder for those community members who maybe are hearing this for the first time, the roles of PSC versus the task force members versus the board. So we kind of wrote it down into three bullet points that just kind of summarizes each of those roles. So the PSC task forces, they are the ones who conduct the curriculum review and research, and they provide reports to both PSC and to the board. PSC is the body that provides leadership and oversight to those task forces. We provide reports and recommendations to the Board of Education as well. And then the Board of Education makes decisions based on these reports and recommendations from both PSC and the task force chairs. Historically, the collaboration of these partnerships have kind of set Mount Pleasant Public Schools' processes apart as both highly effective and a valued curriculum review because you have the professionals who are teaching this content participating in the decision-making process and having all three groups, we do kind of bring that collaboration together. In terms of communication, so feedback from the March presentation suggests that many stakeholders were not aware of the process parts and the participation for PSC. So we would like to maximize this learning opportunity kind of beginning tonight. And moving forward, PSC will provide brief, regular updates to the board, kind of a once-a-month scheduled update. And as we go, we can continue to seek information as well from you as a board that you would like to have us address. I know we have certain things that we'd like to write up tonight. And then as the next couple of months come forward, there are some end-of-year reports that we need to give, and there are some curriculum presentations that will be happening. Parents involved, so the curriculum itself is largely state-defined. We cannot step away from having court. That is our state-driven curriculum, is what we do need to follow. And the professional educators do conduct the bulk of the alignment work. However, the parent feedback component is an important part of task force work. The role of parent participants may look slightly different from task force to task force. Not every single one operates in the same way. PSC does value parental feedback and clarity of curriculum communication especially. We want to make sure that what we are presenting is clear to families, that they understand what their students are expected to be learning. And that's for all public task force documents. One thing that we have done is we have created a short survey for parents who are interested in serving on a PSC task force. They're going to complete that form via a link at the Mount Pleasant Public Schools website, if you want to click on mention. So this is the Professional Studies Committee page of our website, the district website, and you scroll down to where it says links. The PSC links there, there is a curriculum task force interest form. And so it's a simple form, asking first and last name, phone number, email address of those parents who are interested in participating. It does also ask grade levels of your children that are currently in school. This does help us in terms, we are looking at elementary task force. We'd like to know which parents who are participating are looking at curriculum through their children's lens at that particular time. It's beneficial for us to have their interpretation of things and their opinion because they're living that out with their kids in the moment. And then we also do have areas to which you're interested. And that is based on our calendar of when certain subjects are due for their reevaluation or their cycle year. And again, those are, click on all that apply. So if you have a community member or a parent who is interested in more than one subject area, they are welcome to click any that applies to them. One thing to note about this is that even though a parent may fill this out, it may not be something that is necessarily utilized right away. So according to our cycle review, we have a schedule based or determined on when each subject area is up for review and will have task forces that are called to action. So if a parent, say for example, wants to be part of the World Language Task Force, that might not happen for a year or two, but it is something where when it is time, we'll have this information, and we can reach out to those interested parties. Okay. We are working towards kind of revising our page on the district website. We do appreciate everyone's patience as it evolves into a more user-friendly resource. Again, in that interest of transparency, we do want to have as much information out there to the community as we can, but it will be work on process. One thing that we're excited about is that we have identified a template for pacing guides, both for elementary and secondary. We're trying to create that sense of uniformity within our district, not only so that it's easy for anyone checking out our district and looking at our documents to see that consistency, but also for task forces, it takes some of that pressure off of them to say, well, what kind of documents are they looking for? Because in the past, each task force has kind of created a document template that they wanted to have as a final product. And while we appreciate that effort, it is an added layer to an already overloaded work schedule. So by being able to provide this template- template, it's that consistency and ease for task force groups. Um, this is going to roll out with, um, new task forces. We are not asking those groups that have recently, within the last few years, finished their work to go back and completely change their documents. So as new task forces are called to action, their documents will end up on our new PSC guide template that is PSC approved. Uh, the first group that is working at this is our social studies group, as they're being ready to present to you all next month. So you'll start to see the rollout of that with each new task force coming through. In terms of questions, we just wanted to reiterate that if community members and parents have questions about their child's curriculum, the most effective means to ask those questions is to contact their child's teacher directly because they're the ones that have the knowledge of what it is their child should be learning at school. So we ask that parents directly contact teachers, building administrators for specific questions related to a grade level curriculum. If there are questions regarding the process of curriculum development, Linda Boyd is the best person to reach out to for those questions. Any questions?
First of all, I would just like to thank you again for doing this. This has been incredibly helpful to me as a board member, but also as community member and a parent. Um, I really appreciate your responsiveness to the kind of questions that our community has been asking. Um, and I just have what a little suggestion question. I, what you're saying about the fact that, yeah, we have a a cycle. So if you sign up for world languages, it might be years before anybody contacts you. Is it worthwhile, do you think, to like say that at the top of the survey, just so people aren't, you know, calling Linda because they're like, you know, nobody's gotten in touch with me? And just to let people know this is how this process works and it might be a while before you hear from anybody, but...
It might be. What we could do, what we can discuss that at our upcoming, um, PSC meeting next month, but possibly putting the year review next to those subject areas on the form, just so they know we'll be initiated in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, just to kind of give them that idea.
That would probably even be a better plan. So, yeah.
Yes. And there are occasional times where we have out of cycle requests or, um, you know, a year where this year where we have ester funds coming in, where we are, um, looking at certain areas to kind of say, wow, we have funding here now, what we need to look at. So there there are the occasional times where something kind of jumps the cycle process. Uh, there are also years where we have groups that it might be their turn and they say, really, at this point, we don't have any needs. Um, nothing has changed. It's also much simpler process. Uh, but yes, I do think we could find a way to put the year initiation for each of those task forces.
Katie, maybe along that line on this page in the website, we could add the chart that that makes it all. I think it's a really nice visual that shows that it's on board works. We could put that in one of the links.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's a good point. Like, stuff is only happening in this year.
Yeah.
It doesn't continue.
Yeah.
Katie, how are the teacher members selected?
Okay, so for a lot of times, it is administrators seeking, I mean, asking. Um, what they'll do is they look to teachers that that is either a certification of theirs or is a subject area that they primarily teach. So if you have a team of teachers you're building and, um, two teams or two teachers team together, one thinks about, that would be a person that an administrator would reach out to and say, we have a task force forming, would you be interested? Um, so a lot of times it is initiated by administrators who are seeking those people that they know to be kind of experts in that area. Uh, we try to have a healthy balance. So when we are putting together a task force, we are looking to have, um, not only general education, but special education. We try to include, um, depending on the task force that it is, being inner people within that as well. Um, obviously, secondary and elementary for certain things, like we're looking at language arts as a whole, we're going to have elementary and secondary representatives on that committee.
I'm not asking about the task force. I'm asking about the members of PSC, the teacher.
Oh, the members of PSC, I apologize. Uh, so PSC, um, it is a process where it's appointed positions. Uh, however, if there are teachers who are interested, they can reach out to whether Apple would be the person that they would contact and let her know that they are interested. We try to have just the one for elementary, lower L, upper L, middle school and high school.
How objective really is that process?
Um, I would like to think that's objective in the fact that sitting on the committee that we have this year, we all have varying viewpoints. We do not all agree all the time. And sometimes the conversations that we have within PSC are challenging conversations because you have people who are disagreeing. We're disagreeing in respectful ways, but we're disagreeing. Any questions?
I do. And, um, in regards to curriculum or when you're you're doing something, do the assessment scores affect how you decide? I mean, obviously, we have issues. Do you go and look, is is there a better curriculum out there to address our particular students? Or do you have to stay with what the state says and that's it?
With the curriculum, we cannot change the standards. Um, even with our task force, we cannot go in and change the content course standards. That is what is mandated that we teach. The curriculum materials is what we have the ability to to change. And when I say we can't change it, we cannot take away from that. Um, we do have the ability to add to that, but I cannot looking at my third grade standards. I cannot remove any of that. I don't have the ability to say, I don't think this is grade level appropriate, or I don't think that this is well received. I'm just going to remove that from my instruction. It is expected that I'm teaching those standards because that's what it will be tested on when it comes time for our staff. Um, with math this year, just kind of as an example, what we are doing is we have been using a curriculum called Math in Focus, and we've been using it for quite a while now. And we do look at data in terms of, hey, how's our math data looking at the elementary levels? Um, and if we're not seeing huge gains in that, is it based on the materials that we're using to teach it? And what we have discovered is that we just recently conducted a survey with members about what are your thoughts on Math in Focus? Is this something we need to look at? Because we are recognizing that not every teacher teaching that curriculum believes it's meeting these are our students. So that the data comes in when it comes to, do we need to change the mode in which we're teaching? But in terms of the standards themselves, we do not have an option to change those.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Katie? Thank you. Very helpful. Thank you. The next item on your report is our annual update from the Special Education Department. So I will introduce Stephanie House, who is our supervisor of special education. Stephanie, thank you for being here today.
Thank you. All right. Well, why don't we start out, first of all, good evening, everyone. Um, let's start out by looking at the total number of students receiving special education services. This shows, um, special education from two thousand seventeen through the current school year, just to give you an idea of how many students have been receiving special education services in the past and where we're at currently. So as you can see in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, uh, it's about seven hundred and fourteen students. And these numbers, just so you know, are constantly moving. So as I'm making charts, the numbers are changing as I'm making them. So, um, we have students coming out, we have students that are that are graduating from their services, and so it is a number that moves. But, um, the last couple of years has been pretty stable. So we've been running in that low seven, yeah, lower seven hundreds. Um, and that's where we're at currently this year. So, um, looking at the special education numbers across programs, um, secondary resource room numbers have decreased a little bit this year. It could be related to graduations, um, things like that. Um, but if you look at this chart across the board, the numbers are pretty stable there, too. Most of those programs, the numbers are just fluctuating by a few. Um, so that's fabulous. It's kind of by the trend in the last, this is four years, but the last four years is but pretty stable. Um, the number that we see the whole shifting in is speech and language. Um, we have been doing some tier two with speech and language and having great success. And then, of course, COVID happened, and so things are a little bit wonky and the numbers have started to go up a little bit. So I think that's probably a pretty good sign. Um, I'm, you know, reading into it a little bit, but it's, my guess is that, um, the tier two hasn't been making a difference. We're keeping those numbers down and with the tier two not happening as much during that chunk of time, we're seeing those numbers creep up a little bit. So hopefully, um, we can get that tier two happening a little stronger again, um, and see those numbers start to come back down again. So. All right. Uh, current staff needs, we are still hurting in the staff department. We are down five teachers right now. Um, and that's definitely what we have had in the past. So we're probably down more than five technically. But if we could get five, we could function pretty nicely. Uh, right now, with where our numbers are at. So, uh, high school, we're down three high school teachers for sure, um, an elementary resource room teacher and a moderately positively impaired teacher. Um, so as I said before, if anyone knows, if anyone is interested, send them our way. We've been in contact with the CMU, ALMA, SBSU. We've got a few, um, online programs that we've been working with lately as well. Uh, Western Governors, um, there's a new one that just came across. It doesn't have a student teacher. This might be coming from, um, I think it's Western, New Mexico, maybe. Uh, so we're getting some different places that are coming to us as well. So I'm hoping that we will be able to get some teachers from some of those places. Um, once a student teacher does maybe they'll stay. So, uh, the social worker, we are down one right now. However, we did hire someone. She just wants her to call. So that position will be filled. Um, we will have a couple other spots that will be opening. We have, um, I think you all approved, but not writers, retirement for speech and language. So we for sure have a speech and language opening as well that we need to fill soon. Uh, paraprofessionals, we're still down twenty-six paraprofessionals. And, um, that's hard because we have some pretty needy kids that need a lot of support. Um, we have been able to hire many people on a part-time basis, uh, which has helped to fill in some of those holes here and there. But we really could use some more help, um, from paraprofessionals. So, um, but those individuals need to just have a high school diploma and, um, they do need to have some college or they need to take a a task for the paraprofessional. Um, and we would be happy to have people join us. So if you know of anyone in in that area that would be interested, please let us know. Um, you can contact me or you can contact Linda Boyd, and then we will, we'll get involved in that next forum. So. All right, some of what is happening in special ed. We've been working with Alt Shift now for a few, few years. That's a grant funded initiative through the Michigan Department of Ed. Um, we've worked with, um, Avid Language Input and Literacy the last few years with their trainers training us and, um, expanding the knowledge of our mild and moderate teachers to work with those children in those areas. And we have this year given the opportunity to have level two, become level two district trainers. So we have two of our staff members, um, Tracy Wood, who's one of our speech language pathologists, and Abby McClusick, who is one of our moderately positively impaired teachers at the lower L, who are going to become level two trainers, which I'm excited for because we have so many new staff coming in. And by having our own trainers in our district, we'll be able to get that trained much quicker and make sure that they are fully immersed in what's happening in the district that everyone else that's already here already is is providing. So very excited about that opportunity. Um, foundations of math is also through Alt Shift. And, um, that we started about a year ago with some of the training from the Alt Shift, people providing that training. And they have also offered us to be level two trainers in math. So, um, we have two trainers that are going to, or two people that are going to be trained with David O'Toole, who is a teacher for students with moderately cognitive impairments at Ender, and then April Geyer, who is a teacher for students with moderate cognitive impairments, and she is an employee. So they will all be receiving those level two trainings, and they will be able to provide training to our staff as well as help with some of the training for other teachers in the pressure disability RASD. So I always love that opportunity to, because we get an opportunity to to team with the RASD. And, um, they help us out, we help them out. It's a nice partnership. So. All right, continuing on with some professional development. Uh, as I said, we have a lot of new staff. Uh, so we've been spending a lot of time concentrating on literacy and math, um, for the mild and moderate teachers and and the resource room teachers as well. And, um, speaking of RASD, they're providing a couple of trainings right now that they specifically are, um, creating for teachers that teach special education. So, uh, they're going to do both literacy and math, and our teachers are going to be trained in both. It's a quite a commitment, so they're kind of splitting and part of them are going to do the math, part of them are going to do the literacy, and then they can flip. So they can support each other in the area that they did not get trained in, and then they will get the full training themselves the next year. Uh, and then we've had a really nice opportunity, um, Dr. Stern from Central Michigan University. She's in the speech and language pathology department of paracortical disorders. Um, she was offered to come and provide some training in the area of writing for free for our staff, which is huge. Um, she goes all over the country and to the writing media, um, country, um, and provides training. And she said she would love to come and work with us, and she would do that for us for free. So we're excited about that opportunity. And, um, writing is always one of those areas that's really a struggle for special education students. Um, so this will be a nice addition to our training. And she's even going to come into the classrooms and work with the students with some of her students, too. So excited for that to happen. Um, and that will should be happening in the fall. Uh, she did some initial training with us just this year, a couple or a couple months ago. So. All right, shifting gears a little bit, transition. So these are our older students. Um, these are the the students that are finishing up their school careers and are moving into the working world. Uh, some of our students will go to college, some of our students will go into medical working environment. So we work very closely with Michigan Rehab Services. And, um, Michigan Rehab Services, um, helps to fund some of the opportunities for these students out in the community. We have sixty-two open cases right now. So those are students that are going to be receiving transitional services. Uh, eighteen of those are full cases. So those are students that are eleventh and twelfth grade. So they're getting real close. They have a full case getting ready to get more official, um, with their training and their opportunities. And then there are forty-three students that are signed up for something called pre-eds. And the pre-eds training is, um, more of some of the things that I listed under here, like, uh, they do classes called goals classes, and they have different topic areas. So like self advocacy, they do central working skills. They do some financial management, some of those kinds of skills. So they're prepared when they leave us for the work world. Um, they also help with some individual job experiences and some independent living, um, assessments for those students that would like to live on their own, but they're not sure if they have those skills yet. So they help with some of those, um, assessments. And then also benefits counseling because many of our students will receive benefits, disability benefits, and, um, they need to know that when they're working, how that impacts their benefits. So, um, by working with MRS, Michigan, the Michigan Industries Disability Network, we kind of come together as a group and rack around that students and figure out what kinds of services they might need when they leave us while they're here and in Mexico. So. Some of the work experiences, um, that we have often our community members are phenomenal. Uh, they work with us very closely, uh, to provide tons of opportunities for students in different areas. So we have, um, yeah, there's a whole list of of places that are working with us. I'm not going to say them, um, because I want to make sure that people hear their names. Uh, so Murray Corrigan's worked very closely with us. That is Serena Clothing Inc. has, um, now started working with us in, uh, the dress cafe, merchandise outlet, which is a nice one because we get a lot of different types of opportunities there with stocking and cleaning and sorting and inventory and those kinds of things. Um, Cheers Dean Transportation, um, has our students coming out to their facility. Uh, they're doing the inner school mail delivery. So they do learn well for school, which is phenomenal. It's a great social opportunity for them as well as some opportunity for them to be very independent. They can go in and out of buildings and and get that opportunity without somebody on their side all the time. Um, they're doing district wide recycling. Um, they have specialty, special community products that come out. People will call and say, hey, could your students help us create these packages? And they'll put the packages together. Um, they have their own CDE boutique where they make t-shirts and cups and, um, things like that. They take orders and do that. And then our newest one that just came about just about a week and a half ago is the Habitat for Humanity Restore, and we're going to have some students start there as well. So thank you to all of the community members that... So thank you to all of the community members that have reached out and allow us to have our students participate in their businesses. We appreciate that. My Power is something that just started actually, that's in connection with MRS. And that program is a little specialized. So we have a handful of students, about two, three, there's four of them, I think, right now that are participating in My Power. And the idea behind My Power is that the students will go to that business and then they will get a job when they're done. So they learn the skills, they have the people there to help them learn what, how to do the tasks that they need to do. And then when they're finished with their training, the hope is that a business will want to hire them. And I'm very excited to say that we have a young man who is working at the Water Park. And he was doing such a phenomenal job that he had only been there maybe a month, month and a half. And they said, we really want him to come and work for us. And so he is working there as an employee. He's been hired by the Water Park. And he's working there about part-time right now. And they're hoping they can get him more. When he gets done with school, their plan is to hire him full-time, is my understanding. So he's so excited, he's so proud when he comes in every day with his shirt on and his everything he has. So that's exciting because it is definitely working. The Water Park is our main My Power site right now. We do have one student that also lives at Way Oasis. And he's doing kind of the reception work at that building right now. The hospital, we worked previously, but with COVID hit, that kind of all came to a stop. And hopefully we can get back in there again. I know they're working on some other businesses as well to see if we can get some more in the way, so. All right, and then my final slide here is just about the community agencies and relationships. I talk about this a lot as well because I think this is critical for our students and for our staff, that we are connecting with CMH and DHHS and the courts and the tribal community, behavioral health. So that we are, again, wrapping our students as a whole community and making sure that those students are getting their needs met. And if there are holes somewhere along the way, one of these agencies can help us fill that hole and help us fill that gap. So that's something that we are always working very hard to keep and maintain and grow, so. That's kind of the gist of everything for right now. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yeah.
And I know this is a really broad question.
Okay.
And I'm asking your opinion. I know a lot, there are a lot of, there are not as many just general ed teachers going into the business than CMU or whomever. And even fewer than you or me.
Yeah.
What would you, what do you think is the key that we can do here in Mount Pleasant Public Schools for recruitment and retention? I know it's a huge question.
That's a really hard question. Part of the reason why that's so hard is there aren't many, there aren't many individuals going into teaching right now. I believe, I shouldn't even give the number because I want to make sure I'm right, but the current cohort, I believe, is special ed at CMU is like five students. So, you know, we have five openings, you know? So the ability to get teachers is really, really difficult. I don't have a great answer.
Do you have any idea why that is?
There are lots of thoughts, right? Everyone has their own thoughts on why that might be. But it's really, it's not a Mount Pleasant Public Schools issue. It's really, it's a Michigan issue, it's actually a national issue.
I totally agree.
Yeah, they're just, everyone is borrowing from each other, you know, trying to cover their size. It's just there are not a lot of people available to fill those positions.
Can you give us an idea of how many teachers are in special ed? So I know we're five down. How many is the group roughly right now? Just to get, again, and help me get this in 25 seconds, like.
We have approximately, I would say we're about 50 special ed teachers right now.
Five zero?
Yeah.
And that includes speech and language?
Yes, speech and language, social workers, yeah, that's everybody.
Thank you, that helps me kind of put it in perspective.
Yeah.
And so how do you function five down? Is it everybody has extra loads or?
Well, yeah, that is exactly what's happening. What's happening is people are working their prep, they're working their lunches. I have some teachers that are starting at a secondary schedule and ending at a elementary schedule to give us an extra class period here and there. We've had to collapse classes and only offer them occasionally to try to, you know, to be able to manage with the staff that we have. So far it's been okay, as long as we don't keep losing staff. And we may have to adjust how we provide services. We've been adjusting that a little bit over time because we were seeing this coming. It's been coming in special education for a while. So it was not a surprise when things started to really slide for us because we could see it starting to happen. But I wish I had an answer for that question because.
I just recognize how hard you and your staff is working.
Yeah.
And I wish we had some idea of how we can help. And I think bottom line is how do we get people in here to help you otherwise?
Right, it really is, at this point, it really is a body issue, not having enough bodies.
If everybody is, I would note it, and that's why retention starts to become an issue. And so now we're, yeah.
So I don't, I mean.
I want to make sure that you recognize too, that when we have our teachers working on prep or working longer days, they are compensated.
Oh, yes, they are.
And it's not enough. I'm not saying that by any stretch, but they are, they are compensated for their extra time. And we are incredibly appreciative of all the extra time they're giving. But you're right, that is exactly what gets us into the problem that we're in. So I think that Stephanie and Linda have done a really good job. Kelly Mary also with finding a student teacher that's good, working with CMU, getting them released early. You all have been great about hiring people as soon as we can. So we're trying to do things like that so that our student teachers know that they have a place, that we want them, you know, that we want them to stay and be a part of our staff. So I think that's gone.
It's gone pretty quickly.
And we really have had fabulous teachers. We really, really have. So, yeah, we're working hard on that. We try to get as many student teachers as we can. Like I said earlier, once we get them, sometimes we can keep them.
Well, I mean, just in terms of cutting down on what you offer, aside from the fact that, you know, it's suboptimal to be cutting anything. And from a regulatory perspective, there's only so much you can cut, right?
Right.
Right.
Right, yeah, we can't really go so far. Yeah. Yep, so we were constantly, you know, looking at it and trying to adjust and make changes as we can to provide the best services that we can for students. And, well, we have to provide it, so.
Stephanie, would you mind just taking a second? I know you had talked a little bit about like the parent professionals. And we have so many open positions with that. Yes, a little, they did a little bit of college experience, they're taking the test. Could you go a little more detail about what that role would look like? So if someone was interested or kind of wondering, like, would my skills equal that? Like, could you explain that position a little more?
Sure, so there's a pretty large range of responsibilities in that job. But mainly it's working with individual students or a small group of students. And you're working under a teacher. So you're often in the classroom with that teacher. Or you might leave with a student, go to a general education classroom and work with a student or a small group in the classroom. It might be helping them with the work. It might be helping to redirect to the student. It could be helping with toiletting for students that need toiletting assistance. It could be helping with some medical needs that they have. We have a bunch of trades for that, so they're trained for all of that. It's nothing that they need to come in knowing. It's actually a fabulous job. It really is. It's hard work, don't get me wrong. It is, you know, you're busy. But it's really just helping the students to be successful in the educational environment, always under the supervision of a teacher.
And you have positions all the way from like elementary up through?
DK, then Route 26.
Okay.
Yep, because we have students 18 to 26 years old that we provide support and services to as well.
So if anybody's interested in any particular age, there is a job?
Oh, there's a job. Yep, we can find a spot for them. Absolutely, we can, yeah.
Will it on the same night? Would someone that has a kid in our district be able to take a parent professional position and still be available for pick up and drop off? Are there hours matching that of a?
Yeah, we, yes, we work very closely with schedules. Like I said, we have a lot of students at CMU that are working on a part-time basis even. We have, some of the students say I can only work from nine until noon on Mondays and Wednesdays, but then I can work Tuesdays. So we're piecemealing these together. We're doing whatever we can to get the supports in the buildings with our students. So, yeah, we have many parents that have elementary students and they look a secondary schedule or they might come late and a little, stay a little longer, help us something else. Yeah, we totally can work with that. Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions for Stephanie?
Well, if you think of anything else we can do, just let us know, even if it's not, you know, in a year or if it comes early or, and we want to thank you for everything you do. And I guess a critical part of our district, we've seen the numbers. I mean, there's a huge amount of students that need you. And if there's a body issue, then we need to, you know, do everything we can to make sure we get these bodies.
Thank you, I appreciate that, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Steph. So the next few records on my report are just from me actually. First of all, this will be the last board meeting where I will provide a COVID update. As I stated earlier, we're continuing this process through the end of the month. And then we will happily drop it. So I reported to our community that we had one case last week. It was a student case and over the weekend we had one additional case that was a staff member case. So again, we're following our same process. Everyone's been notified, all those kinds of things. But we will end that process, well, April 30th. But the last day I can record is Friday, April 29th, so that's okay. Going back to Sheila's point about transportation, I shared with court members this morning that last week was a pretty rough week for our transportation department. If everything plays out the way we believe that it will, we are going to lose three transportation employees in the next two weeks. One being a sub that has worked most of the year. So essentially a full-time sub, I know that's kind of an oxymoron, but a full-time sub. And then two other employees that were offered full-time, year-round positions outside of our district, both actually outside of our community. So right now we are taking a very critical look at our routes and trying to determine what we can do. Can we piece routes together? Can we put some routes on other buses? Or do we have to eliminate additional routes? That would be our last option, but I'm afraid that it is an option that may come to fruition. If that does, we will contact families directly ourselves. We will offer them I-RIDE passes so that they'll be able to still have transportation. And we'll be as consistent as possible and give them as much notice as possible. So that's what we tried to do today is look at numbers that rocks and have the smallest numbers to see if we can move those students, to see really where we have flexibility. As it stands today, we know that one of the two employees is leaving at the end of this week. The other employee is not officially official yet, but it is likely that that employee will be leaving in the next two weeks, so.
I guess my concern is I don't see this getting any better. I mean, we can't find anything. Is it, are we to the point that maybe we should be looking at privatizing at least part, if not all of our transportation?
So you, you're aware that we're in active negotiations with our transportation association right now. And that is the conversation that we've had. What other pools are out there, what other pools are available that we might be able to use to tap into a larger subgroup or that kind of thing? As you can imagine, it's not something that's popular with that group. So, and it's not something that we want to do either, but we do have to address this. So from my perspective, we need to figure out what's going to happen now, how we're going to get from today through June 3rd. And then we also have to determine how we're going to be able to move forward. We do have a lot of summer opportunities for our drivers, but they are not the consistent 40 hours a week all summer. And so for someone being offered year-round employment, that's very challenging for us to compete with. Even though we do have probably more summer opportunities for drivers than we've had in the last several years, so.
That's what I was wondering, if possibly we could go, maybe we have to go to a mix where we can, you know, we're guaranteed so many drivers that want to work those kind of schedules. And then maybe we have to pick up, maybe we can, I don't know. But I think that that's probably something we're going to have to look at at some point.
Yep, and it is currently being looked at. We have to be creative within the confines of the contract and that sort of conflicts. But that's, I mean, I think they recognize, they being our drivers, recognize that we're in a tough spot. And so again, it's the balance, just like we talked about with Stephanie, of retaining who we currently have and recruiting new. We don't want to put all of our efforts into recruiting new and not support the people that we currently have that have been long-term employees that we value, that we need. So we have to find that balance as well. So we'll continue to do that. Our next meeting with them is Wednesday, okay. So we'll meet with them again Wednesday morning. Obviously, the last time we met with them, we weren't in the situation that we're in today. And so we'll have to update them on that and talk about our options at that point.
I mean, because if we're already going to start providing I-RIDE passes, then maybe at some point we need to partner with them.
Yeah, so I-RIDE has actually been a great partner, especially with our reduction of in-city busing. They've been really great with us. And if you remember earlier in the year, I can't remember now if that was in January, February, we had to reduce a route for a couple of weeks. We provided I-RIDE passes to those families and I-RIDE really was great. So they're open to being our partners. The downfall is they cannot dedicate buses just to our students because they are public transportation. So parents have to be comfortable with students and members of the community being on the same bus. That's one tricky part. I will continue to update you all. We will continue to reach out to families as we know for sure exactly what's going to happen. But we will have solutions. We'll have to have them by Wednesday morning when we meet with them again.
Other questions about transportation?
The last thing I wanted to just quickly add on my report. I did distribute to you all an invitation to visit our student authors at Ender Elementary. These are students from Mr. Old Tools' classroom. And Mr. Old Tools is one of the outstanding special education educators that we have in our district. Was also just honored with the Golden Apple Award from Rovere and from WCFX. But if you can join us on April 29th, it looks like a really funny event. So I wanted to make sure you all had that invitation.
And that's all for our reports, okay?
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Next is the request of financial complaints.
Yes, good evening. I have for you the financial reports for March 2022 and 2021, looking at budget compared to actual. For general fund, revenue was at 56% of budget this year compared to 60% last year. If you look at the detail, we actually are right on target with the same amount of actual revenue. The budget's just higher this year because of those huge severance we're receiving. So that's making that percentage look a little low. Expenditures are at 60% of budget this year compared to 61% last year. For our special service funds, athletics, which is our self-supporting sports, revenue is at 67% of budget compared to 0% last year. And expenditures are at 40% of budget compared to negative 8% last year. Again, like I say every month, that's the addition of pounds. Revenue was higher than expected, so we need to increase that budget. And then the negative was an overpayment in the prior year, so it makes it 20 that hit our books in 2021. The Children's Learning Center, revenue was at 140% of budget compared to 79 last year. And expenditures are at 75% of budget compared to 62 last year. And again, that is a federal grant that we received in January after the budget was already approved for why the revenue is so much higher. For the nurse testing program, revenue is at 0%. That will no longer have revenue coming. Expenditures are at 1% of budget compared to 0% last year. And again, that's a program we're just spending the fun, we all went down to get it to 0. For food service, revenue is currently at 98% of budget compared to 41% last year. And expenditures are at 82% of budget compared to 43% last year. This is definitely something I need to adjust for the upcoming budget revision. Our revenues are much higher this year, the way that they formulated our reimbursements. And our expenditures are also higher with everything right now. Next year, we will be returning back to more of the normal year with our free managers paid lunches. For the school store, revenue was at 58% of budget this year compared to 28% last year. And expenditures were at 42% of budget compared to 31% last year. For the treasurer's report, general fund on February 28th had eight point eight million dollars. We had receipts in the month of March of five point two million and dispersments of four million. That brings us the balance on March 31st of ten million dollars. For debt retirement fund, on February 28th, we had two million dollars, receipts of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and a small number dispersed by sixteen dollars and fifty cents. Uh, the balance on March 31st is two point six million dollars. And for our capital projects fund, um, February 28th, we had a cash balance of twenty-six point one million dollars, uh, receipts, interest income of fifteen hundred and no dispersment. That brings us the balance on March 31st of twelve point six point one million dollars.
Any questions? Any thinking? Next, we move on to correspondence. It's led to a challenge, but we received various correspondence from Santa, from Eric Sheer, from Carol Sobleski-Gall. Um, next, the citizens' request to address the forum, having agenda, non-agenda items. Um, as usual, I will call your name. You will have three minutes, um, once you approach the microphone, and, um, Mr. Earl will let you know when your three minutes are up. First is Carol Sobleski-Gall.
Okay, this is regarding the English Language Arts Standards, which I found on the website, um, the school website, and it says, "The Conde Corrigan State Standards for English Language Arts and Literacy in History, Social Studies, Science, and Technical Subjects," otherwise known as the standards, "represent the next generation of K through twelve standards designed to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life by the time they graduate from high school." The Conde Corrigan asks students to read stories and literature as well as more complex texts that provide facts and background knowledge in areas such as science and social studies. Students will be challenged and asked questions that push them to refer back to what they read. This stresses critical thinking, problem-solving, and analytical skills that are required for success in college, career, and life. The skills and knowledge captured in the literacy standards are designed to prepare students for out, for life outside the classroom. They, again, include critical thinking skills, the ability to closely and attentively read texts in a way that will help them understand and enjoy complex works of literature. Students will learn to use reasoning and evidence collection, collecting skills that are essential for success in college, career, and life. Okay, so I went online also and found a review for a book that is being used in the freshman honors ELA. It's called Freshing, and that was a bit of a controversy before. So I just went to look and see what the reviews were regarding this particular book. Interestingly, they said, first, there weren't any, this particular person said, "First, there weren't any stories about young adults with disabilities. This still is severely underrepresented population in young adult books. It was mostly realistic contemporary fiction with a teenage romantic thread. I would have liked to see less romance and more of a genre of X." There are so many genres out there that are tackling stories from a P L C, LGBT, uh, disabled perspective and doing it not just through romantic storylines, but through how well their lives are affected every day and in every part of their lives. It is unrealistic to think that the only part of life that should be shown is their romantic life. Literature needs more narratives that show all the risks and obstacles faced every day when brave teenagers and young adults step into the world unashamed of who they are, where they are from, and what they stand for, and often that has nothing to do with a date. Until they do, this will remain a gap in silence in literature. Uh, so again, the goal is to train students in problem-solving and analytical skills that are required for success in life. Using books with a greater variety of topics will create well-rounded community members. Thank you.
Next is Jessica Lab.
Hi, Jessica Lab. I live in Union Township, and I have a son at the high school. I'd like to thank the Mount Pleasant Public Schools, the teachers, the staff, and the board members here for providing education to our children and community, because what you do and provide impacts families and the broader community, not just the children in the schools. I continue to appreciate that you listen to the community in these meetings and try to respond to the issues raised here, whether by more clearly voting information and policies or by asking for reports from principals and other teachers at schools in the district. Tonight was a good example of that. As a community member and a parent, I learned a lot just at this meeting, not in the meeting before, so I very appreciate that. Please continue to think about how school policies lead to the goals and outcomes expressed in your mission statement. How can the Mount Pleasant Schools be more inclusive? How can the Mount Pleasant Schools offer quality education from D K through twelve? And how can the schools improve, always improve, on what is offered to truly engage, inspire, and empower students? It's April and I'm exhausted, just attending these meetings in the midst of the rest of my daily life. So thank you for your energy and your willingness to serve the community in this way.
Thank you. That's Laura Borrin.
Hello, my name is Lauren Borley. I live at six fifteen East Wisconsin. And, uh, I want to say thank you to this Board of Education for beginning each board meeting with a land acknowledgement. What an excellent reminder. The land that we stand on right now doesn't belong to us, it wants to acknowledge other people, and it always has. And I appreciate that remembering, because so much of our history goes unremembered. And tonight I want to just briefly remember that in April of nineteen sixty-eight, the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. was assassinated. And let us remember that in nineteen sixty-five, King led a nonviolent march to bring attention to voting rights. When the hundreds of peaceful protesters in Alabama were violently attacked by anti-black twenty vigilante groups, the world was able to watch it on TV. New technology. This day that was remembered as Bloody Sunday moved President Lyndon B. Johnson to sign the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. One year later, peaceful protesters in cities across America were again violently attacked and threatened with violence all over again. Disappointed in the glaring lack of change, King wrote a book titled, "Where Do We Go From Here: Chaos or Community?" And it was published in nineteen sixty-eight after he was assassinated. I recently finished reading this book, and I have been tormented to discover that although King wrote this book over fifty years ago, it could have been written yesterday in terms of our collective ignorance regarding racial injustice and racial inequities. Fifty years ago, King wrote on page ten, "Whites, it must frankly be said, are not putting in similar mass effort to re-educate themselves about their racial ignorance. It is an aspect of their sense of superiority that the white people in America believe that they have so little to learn. I identify as a white person, and I take these words to my heart, and I am committed to owning my own cultural ignorance. I pledge to learn as much as I can about how my experiences as a white identifying person differ from those of others. I ask myself, how can I use this wisdom of Martin Luther King Jr. to advance the culture of liberty and justice for all? May we remember the words of George Sandegana, who famously warns us that those who do not remember history are doomed to repeat it. And where do we go from here? Chaos or community? And I'm hoping, because this is a district that has a longstanding love of Martin Luther King Jr., I'm hoping that we will make our community proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items on the board where the action is required. First off is the approval of minutes in the equal four twenty-twenty-two regular meeting. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And that passes. Next is the financial approval of bills to the sum of five million, three hundred, eighty-eight thousand, six hundred, eighty-five dollars and forty-two cents. Is there a motion for that?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Next, on our new business is the bond recommendation approval. In your work back at the C P, you do have a recommendation letter from Jeff Bates from the Wolfex Corporation. They're providing a, an award recommendation to the lowest qualified bidder for the signed project for Fancher, Gannon, McGuire, Pullen, and Bell's Elementary Schools. Is there a motion for that bond proposal? Or bond, sorry, bond recommendation approval?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Okay, and that passes. Thank you very much. Next is resignations.
Yes, good evening. Um, we sadly would like the board to accept the resignation of Brett Fiddler and Jeanie Fiddler. Um, they are leaving us for, uh, exciting personal reasons, and also Liz Lea is also resigning.
Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Brett Fiddler, Jeanie Fiddler, and any opposed?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? And with that, that passes, and we wish them luck.
Um, after nineteen years, our athletic director, Mr. Conway, has submitted his, um, retirement, and we'd like the board to approve that. Um, he's got two Euler daughters that have graduated and gone off to college, graduated from college, and he has made the decision that, um, he is going to retire. Luckily, we're gonna keep his wife Beth teaching with us a couple more years, but Mr. Conway has decided to, um, to retire from the district.
Is there a motion to, um, accept, um, Mr. Conway's resignation?
I'm a very regret, but excited enough for him.
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? And that passes. We wish him luck for many, many years.
And then we have a new hire for Stephanie's department. Samantha Wilson is joining us. I think the minute you say yes, she'll walk into the classroom tomorrow. So we're excited to welcome Samantha Wilson to Mount Pleasant.
Is there a motion for, to accept, um, Samantha?
There is a very enthusiastic motion. And I'll second that enthusiasm.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? I didn't think there would be.
And, uh, welcome Samantha to the room.
And with that, we move to the Board of Education discussion.
Um, Jen, did we hear how the machine trades competition went over the weekend?
Robotics was over the weekend.
Because...
Skills Trade USA, they, they did well. Um, two gold, one bronze, one gold, two bronzes, two gold, one, two gold, one bronze. It's, yeah, so robotics competed over the weekend. I know Ginger actually was able to watch some of their competition.
Yeah, it was really kind of exciting. Um, Mr. Shaker had sent a link to the robotics competition. We had it up when we were, were going in the office, and it was really, really fun to watch, but I wasn't able to watch all the week, so I don't, I don't know how they ended up.
And, and so the way the competition runs, there are different rounds? And the round that Ginger saw, they actually did have been that round, um, but I'll have to give an update for them, and then I, you know, I don't know how they ended up overall.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Exciting for a first-year team to make.
And also I want to take the opportunity tonight to talk about the diversity, equity, and inclusion task force application that we threw together. I emailed that a few weeks ago. I'm hoping, and I think I've put for most of you, uh, that you've read it, and I just wanted to also bring it up for the public's attention. Um, the task force, uh, application consists of, uh, there's a charge, and so if there's only one part we should really talk about, that's it, to make sure that we have this on the initial charge. And I actually thought that we did tonight. Uh, we want to sample a bunch of edits, and I want to make sure that, um, any board member has a chance to further edit before we bring it up. I think we discuss maybe our next meeting for a, um, board, um, vote. But the, uh, we're pure wording of the task force, um, and I'll be there right now. The task force immediate charge will be to begin the long-term process to improve cultural awareness, diversity, equity, and inclusion in our district. The task force will work to identify and recommend areas for improvement related to diversity, equity, and inclusion strategies, um, district-wide to the Board of Education. To maximize effectiveness and accountability, it will be made up of both internal and external stakeholders. Um, and, um, the, uh, application kind of, um, right now highlights several areas, and so if, um, we have community members that are interested, um, some of the things that we've identified as important aspects are to be team-oriented, so that we can build a strong collaborative culture among diverse identities, to be active listeners, to, so that we can all share opinions and feel heard, to have some project management skills to ensure that the task force remains productive, and to be committed to dedicate significant time to this task force. And right now we've evaluated anywhere, you know, up to four hours a month for collaborative meetings, training, and documentation creation. Um, the application right now consists of, um, just the typical, uh, questions, you know, name, et cetera, roles that you need to play in the district, whether you're a parent, a teacher, an administrator, a member, a business owner, kind of what are those roles in our community, so that again, uh, we can have as diverse a group as possible. Uh, and then it consists of, uh, four short questions that highlight, uh, why do you would want to be part of this, um, task force? What role do you feel diversity, equity, and inclusion should play in our district? Uh, and how do you see yourself contributing to this task force? And so it's kind of very, um, springboard sort of start for us. Um, I don't know, I'm, I'm open to any discussions, any questions you may have that we haven't had a chance to, um, discuss before.
I would like to thank you for doing all this work. I mean, we lean talk to a lot of people, um, who are already doing this work across the state to put this together. Um, she and Tim have worked hard to make this all make sense. Um, Sheila and I are grateful that we, I think it's...
We're gonna take that back.
Yeah, we're gonna use this document that we lean created as a model. We'll have to tweak it a bit for the parent council, but we at least have something good that we can start with, so I, thanks again.
You're welcome.
Just a logistics question. Would you like us to put that into a Google form?
Yes, please.
Okay.
That was my nice question.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's fine. You can certainly do that.
Yeah. Ideally, um, we take that of this today to kind of the information, the questions you may have that we can discuss openly, so that we can go out for, um, a vote next board meeting and then be, you know, basically distributed right away. Uh, it would be ideal, I think, to have an electronic format, it'd actually be easier, um, and then have paper copies and specific locations for those that may not have access.
One thing that might be nice, if, if we think about how we're going to send it out to the community, maybe to have you and Tim and Jessica and Sheila for your group, um, write sort of a cover letter, introductory letter kind of thing, and then we could put the link in the letter, and then we can send it via email, but then also put it in all of our building's newsletters and everything like that. So if you wanted to, to work on that, I think that would be helpful, just as kind of introducing the group and then putting that out, I think that'd help with distribution.
The, the cover letter is the first page, so yeah. We're really good.
And I, I, I appreciate the charge, right? So we're, we're walking through an area that we all want to have a path, um, and it's, and it's broad, and so we want to have open ideas and listen to as many people as possible to provide the district with some kind of a plan, a way to keep moving forward, um, because this won't be a task force that will last forever. Um, it'll be one that'll just, a non-initiated design and what we're trying to achieve as a community. So I, I like the structure of the charge, so thank you.
Yeah, I should add too that I don't think this is a task force that necessarily exists on its own. Most districts I've talked to partner with, um, um, usually nonprofit that do this. Uh, and so there's a number of nonprofit organizations out there, the older districts I've talked to work with a different one, and so it doesn't seem to... And so, there doesn't seem to be a consensus of who to work with, but I think we need partnership. I'm guessing anybody that's gonna sign up for this task force is not really an expert in this work, and we don't expect them to be either, but willing to start the work. And then, you know, I do imagine that one of the first job we have as a task force is to establish this, like who is our partner in this, who's gonna help work with us through this process?
Does anybody have any additional questions? I appreciate all the very members, thank you so much. Is there anything else the board would like to discuss tonight?
I just have a comment. I know this time of the, time of year, and it's, the last few years have been unprecedented, let's just say that. Seems like if it's not one thing, it's another. And I just want to extend my support and my admiration for our faculty and staff members in Mount Pleasant Public Schools. It's not been easy, and you can tell that by the number of educators getting into the business, it's becoming more and more difficult. So, I would like to certainly extend my appreciation to the staff of Mount Pleasant Public Schools.
Absolutely.
And I would say, I'd like to thank you to the middle school and USC for the information and how we're sharing. It's very helpful. We appreciate you taking that extra time. When times are very busy right now, then they have to take extra time for us in the community to appreciate that. And I think it's helping, I think it's a big receive.
Is there anything else anybody would like to add? All right, not seeing anything. All of the meeting adjourned, thank you.